Let me introduce Ralph Fadvelber. Let me introduce Ralph Fadvelber publicly noticed in their publications that we received a copy.
It is December 11th at 6:02 and the regular Board of Commissioners meeting is called to order. Will Commissioner Hodges please lead us in the pledge and the invocation?
Okay, thank you. Please stand.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and the pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthur?
Present.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Here.
Mayor Blatt?
Present.
Next we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second. All in favor? Oh! Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes. Here.
Next we have, we have no proclamations, we have a presentation, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, Mr. City Manager.
Metamayor, members of the board and members of the public, it's with great honor and privilege that I recognize our finance staff for their accomplishments with receiving the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I'm going to read from the press release that was provided by the Government's Finance Officers Association, GFOA, based out of Chicago, Illinois, to really provide for the benefit of the city receiving this award, and we have received this award in the past. It says, "The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the city of Madeira Beach by the Government's Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. For its comprehensive annual financial report referred to as the CAFR, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and it is attained, represented, its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals or department designated by the government as a primary responsible, primary responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR." At this time, I'd like to recognize the finance staff for their remarkable work in putting together such an excellent document, and if anyone has not had the opportunity to read the CAFR and you are having a hard time sleeping, you can do so, and you will not need any medication to fall asleep, but it's a very comprehensive document. It provides for the financial health of the organization. It is a very important tool when the city does look for bond financing and when an agency is looking at the strength of your finances as an organization. So at this time, I'd like to recognize the two financial staff members that are here present with the award, and then recognize the leadership that has allowed for us to get this award this, this year, Director Walter Pierce, and he will be awarded an award for financial reporting achievement. So if you two gentlemen can join me at the podium so I could present you the award. Congratulations.
Now it's time, I'm going to open the floor for public comment for anything related to city business that is not on the agenda. The time is limited to three minutes. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everybody to please be civil, respectful, and kind, and remember when you're speaking at the podium to speak directly into the microphone and state your full name and address. Oh, someone's asking. And use the handheld microphone, is that what you're saying? City Attorney, I believe you've had something to say?
Oh, I just wanted, I was asked by the City Manager to explain the pledge of civility and the procedures for public comment, and I think there is at least one public comments speaker that wants to speak. The pledge of civility is not on the agenda, we're going to add it to the agenda so that anyone that picks up the agenda can see it. It's always posted on the back of the room on the plaque, and I believe there's another plaque in another location in the city as well. The pledge of civility is three parts. We will always show respect to one another, we will direct all comments to the issues before us, and we will refrain from personal attacks. So if we can remember to keep our comments respectful, that will help satisfy the first prong, and that we direct comments to the issues that are before us, city issues, and we will refrain from personal attacks, things that don't involve official business of the city. And with that, I'd also want to say that there is no requirement that we have public comment. If somebody violates the civility pledge, or is disrespectful, or causes a personal attack, they will forfeit the remainder of their three minutes for that public comment period. It doesn't mean they can't come back next meeting and speak again until their three minutes is up, but if someone violates the civility pledge, it would be up to the chairman to make that determination. If another commissioner believes there's a violation, they can make a point of order and call for a vote or consensus of the commission. Again, you're given up to three minutes, please keep in mind the civility pledge, as long as you're not violating the civility pledge, you'll get to use up all your three minutes, but if you violate it, your, the remainder of your time will be forfeited. Okay.
Thank you.
John Hendrix, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. Respect, integrity, open government. These are things that our commissioners ran on. You promised open government, you promised respect, you promised civility, you promised to do the right thing. On September 24th, a hearing was held on some issues pertaining to one of our commission members, that's Commissioner Oakley. The finding just came out on December 7th. The finding was against Commissioner Oakley. They have recommended a $5,000 fine, public censure, public reprimand. You folks, including Commissioner Oakley, ran on the things that I just mentioned, and Commissioner Oakley violated that, and she's violated the trust of the residents of Madeira Beach. And since that is what y'all ran on, I think at this point, Commissioner Oakley needs to resign. I think if Commissioner Oakley doesn't resign, she should be removed from office and another commissioner appointed until the March election. If that's truly what y'all ran on, and truly what you meant, then this needs to be done. I know you folks are friends and you've been together for a long time, but it's time to cut the strings on someone that is not good for Madeira Beach. It's time for us to move on with the, one of the charter amendments that was passed. It very well could be that Madeira Beach is on the hook to pay her fine for her and to pay her legal fees for her. I don't know that, that that has been determined yet, but that's what happened with this amendment that was put through, that the board placed on the ballot, and that the Madeira Beach voters approved. I think people weren't aware of what would happen when they voted on that, but Commissioner Oakley, you have been found guilty on this hearing, and it's time for you to step down. Thank you.
City Attorney, I don't know if this is appropriate, but can you explain the appeal process?
Well, we don't, we don't really comment on, on public comment or answer questions. I think in this particular case, all I can say is that right now there's a recommended order from the Administrative Law Judge at the Division of Administrative Hearings. Either party can file exceptions that are due within 15 days to any of the findings of fact or conclusions of law. I believe it is then 10 days to file responses to the exceptions, and then the matter goes to the Commission on Ethics, where they review the exceptions and rule on them, and issue a final order. So we're not yet to the final order stage, we're just at the recommended order stage, and the city doesn't get involved in that, that process at this point. And at the, when there's a final order, then we can review the other issues that are raised about attorneys' fees and penalties. I think even under the charter, we wouldn't pay any penalties, the city doesn't pay penalties. There is an issue as to whether or not legal fees would be reimbursed or not, that I have not yet looked at, there's not a final order yet.
Thank you for the clarity. Yes.
I'd like to talk about some spending of taxpayer funds, if we may. If you guys read the handout I just handed out, in an email to me and to the commissioners on September 21st, it is stated in here, the forensic audit in its entirety will be completed early to mid-October and will be available for public consumption at this time. Okay? That was on September 21st, and it is now the December 11th. We had a $50,000 audit that was, basically, people were jumping up and down, saying it had to be done, it was mission critical, had to be done immediately. This was supposed to be available for public consumption in mid-October, and I would like to know where it is. I have not seen it, I have not heard from it. Mr. Douthur, I know you said that $50,000 was a drop in the bucket, but I'd like to know where this is so that we can kind of take a look at this and see what all the hubbub was about. Anybody? No, I didn't figure anybody's gonna answer. All right, well, let's chat about this. So we had a grievance hearing for an, for an employee, and the city hired four attorneys to battle a young woman with no legal experience, and we used taxpayer funds in order to fund these four attorneys for a not, for a citizen committee, a non-binding, non-judicial citizen committee. Can somebody please tell me how much money was spent on that? Okay? Can anybody tell me? I mean, this is important to you guys, too. This is what your, your city manager's spending money on. Can you please tell me why he's interfering and impeding with an investigation as it heads to stage two? Okay? If this stance doesn't change, the ICMA is going to get a letter because this is conduct unbecoming a city manager. Okay? Speaking of the employee issue, I hold in my hand a judgment from the state of Florida against our former city manager, Darrell O'Neill. He was stealing money from the city while he was here, it is a judgment that's been done. You guys remember him? Can you please tell me why, why an employee found guilty of stealing from the city, stealing from the city, and his state investigated ethics violation, still has a job here, but Mr. Evans fired a young woman because of an uncorroborated rumor that happened at a bar one night? Okay? So he could hire his little buddy Kurt to do her job. Okay? Guys, these are adding up, there's a lot of corruption going on. Okay? Commissioner Oakley, you're gonna have a tough enough night as it is, so I'll leave you be, but guys, you gotta take a look at this, because this is getting ridiculous. It's getting ridiculous. Okay? He's spending money left and right, I want to know where the audit is, I want to know why we spent $50,000 on an audit and we don't have the results. Promised, you guys got the same email, you got the same email I got, promised two months ago, nothing. Nothing. What happened? You're just gonna look at me. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Okay, let's move on.
Public comment is now closed. Next we have the consent agenda, which includes an approval to surplus the 1999 Salisbury P-25 fire engine and dumpster purchase from iron container. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. We've already discussed the surplus fire truck issue before, and the iron container dumpster memo was pretty self-explanatory, so I think that those are necessary, you need them, and I say that we go ahead. Approve the consent agenda of items A and B.
I'll second. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Next, under unfinished business, is ordinance 2018-14. Both the City Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018-14, and ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 102-signs to meet content neutrality requirements and to clarify purpose and application, resolving conflicts and consistencies, expanding definition of prohibited signs, amending sign dimensions, placement and numbers, amending realty signs, providing a date for discontinuation of newly prohibited signs, amending method of measurement, amending temporary exemptions, amending signs during election period, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Is Director Portell in the audience?
May I, may I? We have, the only discussion on this item previously was regarding the flags. And the possibility of changing the ordinance just to allow for the use of flutter flags during special event periods, such as grand openings for a certain amount of time, and so I propose language of that nature in here, otherwise everything is exactly as it has been in all the various hearings, and we have had this before you several times. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
When does this go into effect? I did not see that in here.
The, the sign ordinance would be effective immediately upon adoption, the, the flood, the removal of flutter flags had an amortization date in it of, I think it was May, May or June 6th.
Okay, because I didn't see that in here, and that's what I was kind of wondering.
Yes, it has an amortization.
June 11th, 2019.
June 11th, 2019. Okay. For flutter signs.
Right. I kept moving it forward as it took us a while to get it adopted, so I was trying to get it a six-month amortization.
And the purpose of that, Director Portell, was to allow the people that had already purchased a supply of them, that really probably only lasted two or three months anyway, because of the weather, you know, how it tears apart the flutter signs, so it's really to allow them time to be able to use up what they've got, and that's why we allowed them six months?
Yes, yes. That's what you had discussed when it was first proposed, I think Commissioner Douthur, from his own experience, said that, you know, after six months in the sign, the sun, they're pretty faded, and we wanted to make sure if someone had just made a purchase, they would have a chance to use that.
Okay, but can I ask another question, please? And I know we discussed this previously also in October and last month. When the signs, for instance, the temporary signs, okay, for opening a business, have already been up for possibly a year, okay? I'm not exaggerating, for a year, we still have to allow them that six months, right? Because this is the first time we're really applying the ordinance to effectually, you know?
Yes. Okay. I thought to add. Well, that would be for the flutter signs themselves. Other illegal signs, and we have quite a few of them, they, we'll give notice to the community and let them know that we're going to begin enforcing the sign code and try to familiarize them with it, so people quite often will want to clean things up themselves, and I have had the commercial folks calling and asking me to review what they have and tell them, you know, how they can bring it into code. So people are aware that there are some changes coming down the line, and also are, many are aware that, especially in the past, that it's very cluttered, and that some cleanup is definitely overdue, but it does require quite a bit of community education, just so people understand, and also a lot of staff time for enforcement. It's gonna be very time-intensive, so we'll, we'll try to deal with issues one at a time and gradually get everybody familiar with the code. Also, it allows for an overlay for places like John's Pass, where we're really looking for a different style, or a just different feel for that specific community, and, and signs that suit pedestrian rather than automobile traffic.
Linda, I understand that the sign ordinance needs to be done, there are some problems throughout the city that need to be taken care of. I am very partial to the small business owners, because they have small businesses, and these flutter signs are basically their only identity, because their business is small. And I feel like, you know, I see where we're, we're gonna go ahead and allow it for a maximum of 60 days for new businesses, but still, the, the businesses are so small, and as people go down the highway, you know, they don't see what's there, because there's nothing that grabs their eye to identify. I would like to see the flutter signs stay, and maybe work it out, and maybe they could allow one per business, or if it's on a corner, maybe two, and just make sure that they're positioned properly so it's not blocking the view of the traffic, or pedestrians, or in the way of the sidewalk. But, you know, these small business owners, they pay taxes here, and they pay some pretty hefty taxes, too, and I think they're entitled to be identified. They need to be identified here, they're here to do business in town, and we need to keep them here, and I think this would help, even though it's something very small, but I think it would mean a lot to them if we could work something out. The rest of the ordinance I agree with, because I know there are cleanups that we need to do throughout the city, it is very important, and we need to keep the city looking nice, but to get some nice flutter signs that are colorful for these small businesses, and I think they would really appreciate it, I really do.
It would be up to the commission. There are ways, if it was directed towards promotion of small business, to perhaps allow one, one flutter flag for businesses that had a limited amount of frontage, because if, if it's directed at the small businesses, you wouldn't necessarily want the big businesses putting up six flags out in front of a shared complex, and then you can't see the small business anyway, because it's very distracting up alongside the road. And as you say, some of the issue is that they aren't maintained, they get put out there, the wind blows them into traffic, or, or across sidewalks and things, so we would have to maintain that. It's, it's hard with the limited amount of strip along the road that you would place them in, but we could specify that they could only be placed on the inside of the sidewalk or something that, to make sure it wasn't coming out over the roadway. There are ways you could do it if the commission will.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but to me, it's a distraction to the driver, and if you have, like I say, a five-strip shop, five strips, and each one of them has a flutter flag, then you can't even see what the store is, all you see is, you know, t-shirts, pizza, or, you know, you don't get to see the name of the store, or how it looks, I don't know, I just think it's more of a distraction.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment with respect to Commissioner Hodges' comments, and I think that they're certainly, I can certainly understand them, but I paid particular attention myself when I've been driving or even walking within the city, and other cities as well, to the flutter signs, and realizing... city, and other cities as well, to the flutter signs and realizing that everybody's got a difference of opinion on them, okay? But the fact is, if you really look at them and if you really stand right, you don't really see what the sign is saying anyway because it's a long, skinny sign. It does attract attention, it really does. I can understand that. But it doesn't necessarily attract attention to that business. And I think that there's been so many other abuses of, you know, it's nice to say, oh, well, we can do it for the small businesses, or we can do it eliminating one or whatever. But it's just not the fact of nature that people aren't going to put up two or three or four signs. It's just what happens. And they don't take them down. I picked up a couple myself on Gulf Boulevard and put them to the side because they've been laying -- I've even tried to go into the business, but I was there too early, to ask them, you know, what did they want to do with the signs? So, no, I think that we do need to not have them at all. Thank you.
With so many all around town, I think it's a lot of just sign pollution.
You know, when we talked about this before, I brought up at the VFW, we put signs up. We have a bunch of them, you know, and I don't deny that. I guess my question is, what determines a small business from the other businesses here? Where do we draw that line? What is a small business and what is not a small business? Theoretically, every business on Madera Beach is a small business because there's no -- unless you go across the bridge to McDonald's, everybody else is a small business, no franchises or anything like that here. So, you know, where do you draw the line? Who isn't a small business and who is a small business? You know, I think we'd have to clarify that before we do anything else. Is it based on the number of employees? Is it based on square footage? What would it be based on for it to become a small business? You know? So that would be my question.
Currently, it says nothing about the size of the business. It just says, "Flutter signs accept a maximum of one per 50 feet of linear frontage, may be displayed for a maximum of 60 days by a new business, not including a change of ownership, from the time a permit is issued for new construction or remodeling until 90 days after a local business tax receipt has been issued. Those in place and compliant as of adoption of this ordinance may remain until June 11th, 2019."
So you're saying?
So it sounds like it's 60 days when you issue the permit for the construction and through that time, and then an additional 90 days after the local business tax receipt has been issued. So a total of 150 days, you'll get one flutter sign for every 50 feet. So if they take up more than 50 feet, a larger business would get more than one.
So where -- what is determined what is a small business? I mean, if we put a hotel up and it's brand new, that's not a small business, you know?
Yeah. The way the ordinance is right now, you don't -- there is no definition. It's not dependent on the size of the business, other than just the size of the linear frontage of the actual structure, not the size of the business.
Okay. Because I was trying to answer to Commissioner Hodges when she said the small businesses. And I'm just asking, what do we determine is a small business and what isn't a small business?
It would apply to all businesses. But I guess you were saying it should only apply to small businesses? I don't know how we would make the differentiation.
Yeah, and I don't either.
I think it should apply to all businesses, probably equally.
I wouldn't know how you could because it would not be discriminatory if you're trying to find, you know, a business that has two employees versus a business that has 12 or by square footage or however you wanted to do it.
There are like small business association definitions for SBA loans. There are some definitions of floor statutes we could look to if we wanted to do that. That would be something that Director Portell and I would have to go back and find and bring back to you if you wanted to continue the item to a time and date certain, if you want to make a change. The way it is right now would apply -- it would apply to all businesses.
Okay. So I'm not in favor of going back and looking to determine what a small business is? I'm in favor of passing it?
Well, let's open it up for public comment.
Yeah, okay. Larri Tyner, 4996 Miramar Drive, Madera Beach. Why not, I can understand with a lot of the flutter signs, but why not limit it to maybe one or two? Because I do know that there's times, especially in strip malls, when I'm driving by, I know that there's buildings there, but all of a sudden this flag goes up and I realize, wow, I didn't realize that was there. And so then I went and I visited it. So, I mean, it does help. And the speed limit around here is slow enough that you should be able to read them. If not, you're going too fast, you know? Because we have low speed limits. But it, to me, it just would be, you know, limit. Don't just outlaw them all, but maybe one, one per business or something? I mean, it just might would help. I don't know. Just saying.
Doreen Moore, 13019 Boca Seaca Avenue and 13030 Gulf Boulevard. As a small business owner and having operated in the city for over 30 years, I remember when we did have a very strict sign ordinance. My first experience of coming before the Board of Adjustment was to say, I can't get anybody to understand that I'm a real estate company because can I put a sign on the roof? Well, no. And I had to learn how you go through the variance process. So it was a learning step. But we've come so far. Things have changed in the 30 years. I'm the first to admit, I've got two flutter signs in front of my real estate business, and that's not going to cut it when you look at the number of feet and the direction. But they're there because everybody else has them. And quite frankly, I think our city suffers from sign blight. I think we're inundated. You're driving down the road doing 35 miles an hour. You're watching for the blinking yellow pedestrian lights. You're trying to figure out, to be cautious in your driving, and is a person in front of you not know where they're going when they're trying to find a hotel? We just have an overabundance of signage. This is why when you see strip malls and commercial centers, you don't have the name of things. They're giving you a generic. Is it pizza? Is it an eye doctor? Because you only have a short period of time to be able to see and focus on what the business is. It's -- they're using a generic name. And I'm rendering my opinion. As a real estate broker, I think we have entirely too many signs with the idea that we used to have one listing, you'd have a sign on that piece of property. Now we have multifamily buildings that we're allowing to have 4,000 signs up and down the road based on some unknown quantity of the amount of units that are being listed and marketed for sale. And I think that that's only increased the sign blight. Again, from a commercial standpoint, new development, you have a lovely rendering, you offer the number of units that are being sold, you give the information on how people can find out about the property, but you don't have an independent real estate sign every five feet up and down the street. We're overwhelmed, and I think we have sign blight. So I encourage you to try to foster small business, but find a way to do it that's going to work for all of us.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Floor is now closed for public comment. Any more discussion on the board?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move that we pass ordinance 2018-14, amending Charter 102 signs on the second reading and public hearing, amending Charter 102 signs.
One second. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Next, we have continuing services, professional services agreement with SML Inc. for public records management services. City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, this is a item that's been continuing each year. The city has off-site storage because we really don't have room to store all our public records. And so this company here makes sure that when records is due for destruction, they take care of all that, and they make sure everything is properly labeled and work with staff on their records.
Any discussion from the board? Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve of the continuing professional services agreement with SML Inc. in the amount of $30,000.
I'll second the motion. Second the motion.
Any more discussion? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Next item is Resolution 2018-20-24, reunion contract with Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 4966. Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, this item before you is seeking approval of Resolution 2018-24, a contract between the city of Madera Beach and IAFF Local 4966. The city staff that is comprised of the Finance Director, Fire Chief, Accounting Manager, Human Resources Coordinator, and the City Manager successfully negotiated terms and conditions of a three-year contract for the purposes of entering to an agreement with our firefighters. The firefighters did meet on November 26th and 27th to ratify the tentative agreement by a vote of 12 to 0, 12-0, and one member was absent. Some key provisions in the contract that we were successfully able to negotiate, one calls for that this fiscal year, fiscal year 2018, that they will receive a 3% increase. Currently, the union representatives already receive a 3% step plan. So once they hit their anniversary date, it is very common for them, and in most fire agencies, where they would receive an additional 3% increase. So we are proposing that in fiscal year 2018, they will receive a 3% increase. In fiscal year 2019, it will be a 1% increase. And in fiscal year 2021, which is the last year of the contract, they would receive an additional 1% increase. As previously stated, they have already experienced a 3% annual step, and that is something that is consistent with most fire services across Pinellas County and across the state for that matter. So staff did not go in there to make any tweaks or modifications to the existing step program. One other element that was incorporated into the contract is that when the city was to proceed forward with a compensation and classification study, if there was a difference of 5% with respect to what the employees are receiving in compensation 2019, anything over 5%, there will be an economic reopeners on the last year of the contract where both parties agreed to mutually discuss the salary and wages of the represented employees. Also, there is a $750 deposit into a health savings account for any personnel that did select a high deductible health plan to date. We have one employee in the fire service that has decided to benefit from that plan. One of the things that is very important to us as an organization and is very prevalent in the fire service is the constant challenges that we have with respect to our fire personnel being exposed to hazardous material, gas. And it is very important that we, as an organization, do everything in our power to ensure the health and safety and welfare of our firefighters. And that's why we included in this contract that the city, at our cost, will incur the fees for additional cancer coverage to provide for additional support for our fire personnel. Traditionally, that was costs that they absorbed, but we thought, keeping in good practice and seeing what industry trends are, we thought it was appropriate that we pay for that particular service for our employees. There are some other elements here that are consistent with existing language. There is some me-too provisions that in the event that the Board of Commissioner ever decides to provide for an additional holiday, the employees will be entitled to that holiday. One of the things that was very important to the fire union as well was that the fire verbiage be added into the contract and be a representative of Local 4966. And we concurred with that recommendation. Two elements that are important as well is that the item with respect to childcare for our fire personnel is a big benefit to them. And one of the things that we are asking for the Board of Commissioners to consider when we bring forward the amendment to the fee ordinance is to allow for fire personnel, as well as general employees, to be able to receive childcare services for their dependents, and it has to be their dependents, free of cost. We've provided that benefit to employees for a long time. This was one very important issue for our firefighters, and we thought it was appropriate to consider making that modification and then also furnishing that same benefit to all our employees, whether they're represented and non-represented. Also, the last element associated with this is that we would like to have this contract take effect retroactively, taking it back to October 1st, 2018, and in essence, making sure that the employees are held harmless for the contract coming before you here in December. The monies have been appropriated in the budget. There is no need for additional monies associated with the benefit changes and the modifications that we have included in the contract. And so it is fully funded in the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 2018-24 for a three-year contract with our labor union, IAFF 4966, and then providing for direction for the city manager to bring back a modified language in the fee ordinance to remedy the situation with respect to childcare as part of the last component of this contract. And staff stands prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Question. When we started talking about this and we went in there and met with you, one of the things we, I asked for at least, was, you know, you guys talked about was, you know, the other people are making more money than our people are. And we said, let's see what the other people are making. And I've never seen that. You know, what are the other fire departments, Treasure Island, whatever, Seminole making in order to justify the raise?
I can tell you from the analysis that was provided by the fire reps that the compensation and wages and fringe benefits that other agencies receive outpaces ours. And therein lies why we wanted to proceed forward with a compensation and classification study. Because if we decided to come into line with where the other entities are, it would have been a larger fiscal impact. Our firefighters, if you join the city of Madera Beach Fire Department today, you're probably coming in at around 43,500 to 44,000. Other entities such as Treasure Island or Pinellas Park or Seminole, you're coming in well within 47,000, 48,000 and some of the other agencies. However, that is why we wanted to move forward with a compensation and classification study. Because when we first met with the fire union, the initial proposal was a 14% increase in year one to effectively catch up to the other agencies and pay compensatory to their peers. However, we were able to negotiate with the union, and they said, well, we would like to get a 3% raise. Because in their subsequent contract, they received 3% less than the general employees received. So they were already behind what some of their other peer agencies were receiving as it relates to compensation. But before we decided to say, let's move that salary up to your peers or recommend that, we wanted to provide the opportunity to do a comprehensive study, find out the range to make sure that we slot our firefighters in the appropriate section. So that is why we did not come with a study that was provided by the fire union. We wanted to do our own independent analysis and look at compensation holistically. That's why, in the event that there is a 5% difference, then we come back and there's an economic reopeners for the contract. If there is, if we're under that 5% and we're within the salary that the study says we should be in, then that particular wage reopen provision doesn't kick in. So we wanted to do the study. There's elements that allows for us to open up. And to the fire union's credit, we will probably have the study completed well within fiscal year 19. But they have agreed to defer for discussions on that towards the later part of their contract. So there may be a situation whereby you see the general employees get the fund So, there may be a situation whereby you see the general employees get the funding first, and then fire is corrected as far as their compensation in the second phase, depending on what the numbers come back, but ideally, we'd like to do it with one fail swoop, but we wanted to do the research before we bring that back by an entity that is certified to do such an analysis.
So, we're doing this without actually seeing the numbers, is what you're saying?
Basically, we're recommending a 3% increase for fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 20 and 21 would be a 1% increase that the employees will be entitled to, but it's important to note that in their previous contract, and through that three-year period, they did sign a contract, and those can argue that, yes, they mutually agreed to it, but they did receive over those three years 1% less than the general employees received during that time.
But at the same time, they're also getting a 3% increase each year.
As far as, with their step program, yes, with their step program.
So, basically, they'll be getting a 6% this year?
This year, correct.
Jonathan, can you refresh my memory a little bit here? The city employees themselves, do they have free childcare?
At this particular moment, no. No city employee does have free childcare, and that is one of the things that we would like to bring back for the board to consider as part of the modified ordinance to allow for after-school care to be afforded to not just the firefighters, but the general employees. The firefighter said that that was an important issue for them, and we want to, as best as we possibly can, treat the employees the same across the board. So, it would be my recommendation that the board consider to allow for childcare versus, I know in the past, it was summer camp. There was a desire to have the conversation about summer camp and childcare, but we thought that the amount for childcare is far less than the summer camp amount is, because you're paying maybe about $120 or $100 per kid versus childcare is a fraction of that, and if the board is so inclined to consider that, I'll be able to tell you the fiscal impact versus if Johnny goes to childcare versus summer camp, and then you can look at the benefits of that. But a couple of employees have communicated to me, general employees, that that was a good benefit for them.
Yes, and I feel like if we're going to do for one, we need to do for the other also.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you.
Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed. Any more discussion from the board? Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. I move for approval of Resolution 2018-24, a contract between the City of Madeira Beach for a term of three years, 2018 to 2021, and further recommend that the city manager present modification to the fee ordinance to address item 13.
Did you say item 13?
Item 13. That shown above, that's where it's, the city will propose childcare for fire personnel that will be at no expense to the employee. It doesn't say we're going to do it. It says that he's going to present it to us. Okay.
A second. Any more discussion on board? Will the city clerk please call the floor?
Resolution 2018-24, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement between the city and the firefighters of the City of Madeira Beach Local 4699 Incorporated, providing for separability, providing for repellent, providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next under, oh, no, we're not there yet. The last item under unfinished business is the Reddington Fire Services Contract. Fire Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What you basically have before you tonight is an extension of the longstanding inter-local agreement that the City of Madeira Beach has with the City of Seminole, the City of Reddington Beach, North Reddington Beach, and Reddington Shores. This is an extension of that contract that's been in place basically for 20 years now, and what this will do is extend it for an additional 10 years. Over that 10-year period, the revenue that will come to the city is estimated to be over $2.5 million. Staff's recommendation is for approval.
Any discussion on the board?
Chief, is what we're getting, is it going up in the last 20 years?
Yes, sir. There is a multiplier that is calculated in there every year.
What percentage is it going up per year?
It is all based upon the, let me get it down so I know exactly what it is.
U.S. Department Labor Consumer Price Index.
That's correct.
That's what it's based on.
What percentage is that that we're getting? That's what I'm asking.
I had one comment, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
When we were discussing this, were we not going to do some type of a study? We know where we came from in the very beginning, when we started assuming, okay, these other cities, and I think it was your suggestion, or the city manager, that we go back after we've accepted this, okay, and think about where we came up from, because we don't know where we, we don't know why we started at the amount we did. Did we not, okay?
That is correct, Madam Vice Mayor. One of the things that staff wanted to embark upon, if this contract is executed, that we are to commence the process to put out a solicitation for a firm to come in and look at the cost to provide fire suppression services here within the City of Madeira Beach, as well as the contractual entities that we have a partnership with, and then bring forward what those findings are to the Board of Commissioners, and that would be the mechanism that would allow for us to renegotiate the terms and conditions of the agreement. There are some other things that the chief is consistently watching as it relates to the fire station that is looking to be constructed north of us in the Reddington communities to provide service, and so we thought it was important for us to execute this contract to effectuate the relationship between both the entities, and we may find ourselves in a situation where we could potentially be the sole fire suppression provider for the Reddington communities, depending on how the conversations go with the county and Sunstar and the other communities, but we wanted to make sure that we got this contract executed. We're going to do a little bit more research, and based on my conversations with the chief and the funding structure that's in place, in the event that that would happen, there would be more than adequate funding available to provide the services and the apparatus to service those communities at no additional cost or burden to the Madeira Beach taxpayers, because that's one of the things that we want to make sure, that there is not a situation whereby our community is subsidizing another community, and that the full freight is being spent. And, you know, obviously, with the past relationship, one of the things that I've had the conversation with the chief about is that, yes, we have been providing services, but we cannot go in there and in essence ask for an increase when we don't have a good indication of what the costs are to provide those services. So, we thought it would be premature to push in that space, in addition to the other communities that have executed the contract. Seminole was okay with the arrangement that was provided, and they weren't interested in making modifications, so we decided to defer, and then we think we can make a superior argument once the analysis is completed.
So, you are going to look into doing that and finding out what the actual cost is of service up there?
Yes, Madam Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Where are we at on the, they talked about the fire station up there, building a fire station. Are they dragging their feet on that, or what is going on with that?
Pinellas County obviously has the lead on that, but they are pushing forward with that. They've got the designs in place, so now it's just a matter of when they can allocate the pinellas money to actually fund that unit up there.
And then we'll staff that, is your understanding at this point?
That's going to be part of the discussion that we're going to have, subsequent to that station being finalized and put in place. There's going to be some moving parts in there that's going to have to be pieced together, but there's going to be lots of discussion, and city manager direction will be at no cost to the city any additional operations that are put into place.
Thank you.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Any more discussion from the board? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement, providing fire suppression and EMS services to the Reddingtons.
I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the floor?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners.
Next item under new business is ordinance 2018-16, ordinance placing charter amendments on the March 12 ballot. City Clerk?
City of Madeira Beach Ordinance Number 2018-16, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, providing for ballot titles, ballot questions, and text for proposed referendum questions to be placed on March 12, 2019 municipal election ballot that would amend the charter to change and amend the City of Madeira Beach Charter to provide for simple majority vote to take Board of Commissioners' action. Term limits, forfeiture of office for knowing violations of certain state laws, forfeiture of office after three unexcused absences, adjustment of district boundaries every five years, adopt state law for recall procedures, induction of newly elected commissioners, recognize city manager, and remove city treasurer on the list of charter officers, delegation of commission investigation procedures, special magistrate to replace Board of Adjustment, citizens initiative, and referendum procedures, amending charter regarding civil service commission, providing effective dates, providing for separability. And, Madam Mayor, this, the charter review committee has worked very hard, and they finalized their review of the charter, and these are the questions that was chosen to go on the March ballot. It was, there was a citizen forum hosted by the Charter Review Committee on December 3, and of course, the Board of Commissioners workshopped the charter amendments on the 6, and these are the questions that derive from those meetings that are before you tonight for first reading.
Clara, are they going to have another meeting for the public to come in to have the amendments explained?
Yes, ma'am. Forums will be scheduled.
They will.
And of course, we'll also have another public hearing. We'll have a public hearing for second reading and public hearing, but we will have forums.
Okay, thank you.
Several.
I just didn't see it listed on here. I thought maybe it would be.
Oh, no, not for this month.
Okay.
Yeah. But we'll have a public hearing on January the 8th, and then from there, we'll be doing our.
Okay, thank you.
I have one correction on page 16 of 20. Number 6 is crossed out in its entirety. It should not be crossed out.
Where is that?
Six, they wanted to hold grievance hearings, issue advisory opinions, just as they do now, so they wanted to keep six in, not delete it.
You said number six?
Yes.
City Attorney, are we going to go over these?
I guess on page 15, we'd also leave in the introductory, section C, so it would be C. Instead of six, we would make that one, and then eight would be number two, if you decide to go with that alternative one. Tonight, we want you to choose what you want to do with the Civil Service Commission. There's a couple alternatives, one and two, for which you to discuss. The other one that we had talked about was the rebate, or recall procedure is on page eight. When the committee had met with the clerk, the Charter Review Committee thought, and the clerk, based on the clerk's recommendation, that it would be nice to have something in the charter that referred people to where the recall provisions were found in Florida statutes. So, it's kind of a cross-reference to Florida statutes. I think some of the Commissioners mentioned during the workshop that it may not be necessary, and if we're trying to minimize the number of amendments that we have to stop voter fatigue, that we may want to delete unnecessary charter provisions. So, this just simply repeats and cross-references Florida statutes, so if you wanted to take out an unnecessary charter amendment, this would be number six on page eight, and that's for your discussion, whether you want to keep it in or not. We wanted to do that while the clerk was here, because when the workshop was held, the clerk was out. The clerk has to deal with all the recall people that come in, so it's kind of nice to have something in the charter where they can see it, and they don't have to ask her for legal advice about where to go look for it.
We're going to open it for public comment now?
1-9 Boca Seaca Avenue, Chair of the Charter Review Committee. To the Commission, I thought that there was discussion that the item, as it related to civil service commission and the in-depth discussion, I believe Commissioner Douthur, you recommended that that be removed for further discussion and...
Let me make our recommendation. I will do that.
Okay, that's what I was questioning. Thank you.
Would anyone else wish to speak? Floor is now closed for public comment.
I have some questions, okay? Or just I need for all of us to go to page 3 of 20. And down at the bottom of the last paragraph, City Attorney, beginning on March 13, is that supposed to be 2018 or 2019?
On that page 3 of 20?
Yes, last paragraph. Why did I?
Oh, beginning, I thought it was at the very end of the paragraph, so the beginning. Beginning on March 13, I think it should say 2019.
Okay, that's my thought.
Page 3 of 20.
3 of 20. And, okay, and then, okay, on 8 of 20, which is the one, the recall procedures?
Yep.
Yeah, I know that we want to discuss that, but I just, or get everybody's opinion on that. This charter amendment would notify residents, and I was just looking for a better word, if we do intend to keep that, okay, instead of would notify, because we're not really notifying, we're notifying them by virtue of this ballot, you know, of this ballot question six, right? But we're not notifying them like, you know, mailer, or by any other legal means, and I'm just wondering if we should use a different word than notify.
Advise?
Provide?
Something, you know.
Yeah, advise the residents of procedures.
You could say would reference, or advise.
Whatever y'all think, I just don't think notify is right.
Or you could say this charter amendment would adopt procedures for the recall of elections, or would cross-reference procedures.
Would cross-reference, that's probably, yeah. Because that's really what you're doing. It's already been stated.
Would cross-reference procedures for the recall of elected officials. That sounds good.
Okay. And then on page 9, in the first paragraph, page 9, first paragraph, rules of board procedures should be adopted. Remember, we were talking about that?
90 days.
Yeah, we said 90 days, not 60, didn't we?
You wanted to go to 90 there, that's fine.
Page 9.
Yep.
Right, because we never get that, that's never done in the first two months of being in.
It's the Commissioner's handbook, you know?
Okay, we change it also on the very last sentence of the page to 90, to the actual charter.
Yeah, to 6, I mean, yeah, to 90.
Now 90.
And let's see, is there anything else? Yeah, there was. Yeah, there was one other thing, it was on page 12. And I don't know why we did this, but this was your word, I think, City Attorney, in the first paragraph, this charter amendment would amend the section of the charter concerning investigations by the Board of Commissioners to delegate, instead of to state the Board of Commissioners may make investigations. We were delegating, weren't we?
And I think you could just take out the words, the Board of Commissioners may make, so we'd just say, charter concerning investigations by the Board of Commissioners to delegate investigations into the internal affairs of the city by appointing a charter officer to investigate internal affairs of the city.
Okay, to delegate, okay, to delegate inspections, okay. And I just wanted to make it clear, I guess, on page 14, or make, or ask if anybody had anything else, on page 14, this charter amendment would allow, first paragraph, this charter amendment would allow citizens to circulate petitions to propose, comma, adopt, comma, or require reconsideration or appeal, to propose, and then adoption is not, I mean, am I reading it wrong?
Let me read it out loud and see how it sounds. This charter amendment would allow citizens to circulate petitions to propose adoption, require reconsideration, or repeal of ordinances by an initiative and referendum vote of the full electorate or not preempted by state law with signatures of at least 10% rather than the current 25% of the total number of electors registered to vote in the last regular city election, and establish petition circulator authorized to collect official signatures on petitions.
Okay, I, I think I just was reading it wrong.
Instead of establish, I think it said, and authorize petition circulators.
Petition circulator.
And authorize, yeah, petition circulators to collect official signatures on petitions. We could change that part you were talking about, perhaps, but I think it sounds okay when you read it, to propose adoption, require reconsideration, or repeal of ordinances.
I just jumped the, I obviously just jumped the gun on it and I was just reading it, hell, I.
No, that's okay.
And then I didn't read it back again. Thank you.
City Attorney, the city clerk said, I believe, we were going to go through these one by one versus approving, we've already said that these are all going, we want them, we voted that these would go through, or do we have to re-go through?
I think you could just discuss them in whole at this point. We went through them individually before, if there's something you want to go through here. We can stop, there was a debate on whether or not to include number six, and there is a debate on whether to include number 12, and if number 12 goes forward, what form 12 should take, based on the workshop discussions.
So you were suggesting that we could delete number six?
Well, I'm not suggesting it, it's, there was a discussion about that. If there, if you felt there were, these were, there were too many, right now you have 12, if you're trying to get down to some magic number.
I think we keep it. Keep number six.
Okay, I think Commissioner Douthur was the one who had mentioned the possibility of taking out six, so if he supports six, I think there, there's support for keeping six in then by everyone.
Well, do we have a consensus to keep six in?
I do, I agree to keep six. I do think that we had number 12, and I still, I guess I'm not really clear on where we're going with, with 12, just Commissioner Douthur mentioned something.
Well, what I'd like to do is make a motion that we pass this with the changes, recommend it, and alleviate number 12, alternative one and alternative two, until we get, until the city gets back with us with the, with more in-depth study of the duties and responsibilities of the city commissioner, or the civil service commissioner.
Civil service.
So we would basically pull 12, alternative one and alternative two off at this time, and if it takes time, it doesn't have to go on March, we can always put it on the November ballot. So that's what I would like to do. That's, that's my recommendation.
So meanwhile, the existing language would stay in the charter unchanged?
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's on the agenda for the next.
The workshop.
Next workshop.
Yeah.
And also, because I drew it down here, that we were going to go through, look at the code and the charter and the personnel manual and find out where they all intertwined and, and how we could get it back to work.
And the civil service commission is working on the personnel manual and ordinances. Probably be a few more months before we have something go, on all of those back.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the civil service commission has concluded their review of the city's personnel manual, but as previously stated, that there are some items in there that conflict with the originating ordinance, ordinance eight thirty-seven, and then there was some amendments that were done by resolution that's inconsistent with what the ordinance called for, calls for, and conflict with that, and then the charter, so now we're literally going through multiple documents to find where the conflicts occur. And so in our conversation that we will have with the board on the 18th, we will show you an example of exactly some of the challenges that we have going through the personnel manual and pulling back some pieces and then re-establishing the document to make sure it incorporates everything that we needed to incorporate for the purposes of providing a comprehensive personnel manual for our employees.
You know, I, I think that Ellen Palladino brought up some very interesting points last Thursday night, in that the federal laws and the state laws have changed and are very difficult to understand, I guess, you know, and to put this into the hands of people that aren't truly qualified or don't understand all the state laws or federal laws, for them to be making decisions on, or employees, I, I think is kind of very scary, you know, for lack of a better word. You know, this, and like Mrs. Palladino brought up, it was like, you know, the, this should be in the hands of professionals who are trained, human resources people, to handle these type of situations, not in, you know, if I was on the civil service commission, I would not be qualified to, to make some of the decisions, because I don't know enough about the human resources, you know, if we had a civil service commission where everybody won the commission, where it was human resources people from different businesses around the area, you know, and qualified and as human resources management, then that would be a different story, but I think it's kind of scary right now that we're asking people that are not trained in this to make decisions that the city can be held liable for, you know, and that kind of scares me. You know, I understand we don't have to take their recommendations, but still, for them to be making the recommendations and not be really qualified to do that is, is not appropriate.
And Madam Mayor, our intent is certainly to make sure that we provide for the, the support necessary as the board remains in existence, but certainly to Commissioner Douthur's part, our remarks is that it is ever-evolving, ever-changing, and having that expertise in-house to be able to help navigate through some of those things and having Labor Council look at some of those things is critically important because HR is both the shield and the sword for the organization, so we have to be very systematic and very pragmatic in our approach and develop policies that make sense for our employee population and that is consistent with running a government entity in the 21st century. So there's some things that I will show you as part of the presentation at our workshop that shows the inconsistencies and how many different documents will have to be reviewed to get it to a point where we're comfortable with it, so we're taking some elements that the civil service board provided to us, refining those elements, you know, by providing for a strikeout and underline so they can see the changes, and then working with our Labor Council and our HR practitioner to bring a revised ordinance that corrects a lot of the amendments that have been made and make sure that it's a document that we can feel comfortable with and we can explain to the employees what those changes are, but it is going to be a, a pretty hefty lift for us as an organization.
You know, the only way that I, I can really see having a civil service board that can do the job properly is if we sent every one of those people in the civil service board off to have them educated and picked up that cost, which would be astronomical, you know, so, because like, like you said, like I said, basically, the laws are changing every day, you know, and you have the federal law and the state law and, you know, how all these intertwine, you know, is very pragmatic, to say the least.
Right, I, I also, I commend the, all of the commissions that are volunteer organization, you know, volunteer to, to our city for certainly their efforts and everything, but it, I've, I've read so much of the civil service and I guess because I was on it for so many years, the committee really needs to be labor attorneys. It really needs to be a committee of labor attorneys or, you know, people that are, know just everything about all those different laws, as the speaker last week indicated, to really be able to put us on the right track, because it just appears that, I, I don't know how long, for instance, the committee worked on the personnel manual, but it, I guess the good thing is that it, what it has done is to brought up so many inconsistencies. If there's anything to be said about the result of it, even though there's, you know, is that it brought more inconsistencies to our mind, that has probably been ignored or whatever, yeah, ignored for 10 years, 12 years, whatever, maybe five years, but anyway, I'm in agreement to, to certainly go ahead with the charters that are the, you know, the improvements, the amendments that the charter committee has done, but leave off that, that ballot question 12 and the alternative, so, with respect to going further later on. But I certainly would like, once again, to thank Chairperson Doreen Moore and all of her committee for the, certainly the discipline and the diligence to go through with all of it, so, once again, thank you.
Any more discussion? Do we have a second?
Did she make a motion?
Can we be clear about the motion?
I thought John made a motion.
I made a motion.
But I will.
That we accept this with the changes that we talked about on the different pages, like the ninety days and all the different ones, but leave out 12.
And the alternative.
One and two, at this point, till we, till they get back with us with more in-depth description of what the job would be.
I'll second that.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And I also would like to thank Doreen, by the way, in the committee, that's a tremendous job, a very difficult job, thank you.
Let me ask Doreen a question, as the chairman of the, of the charter committee. What do you see moving forward? Does this just end and go away? Do, does the charter committee stay involved with the charter, making future recommendations? What do you see the charter committee doing down the road, or anything or nothing?
Basically, the charter was written in, what, 1947, 1948, and I don't think that there's been a lot of revisions, and I, I don't see where there needs to be a continuation of the charter committee, except that, you know, there may be a five-year review or a 10-year review, but I think that it, it's up to staff maybe to have a tickler on their calendar at some point in the future that, that those kinds of things need to be looked at, but I don't see a continuation of the charter committee.
Back in about five years or so, and kind of look at it again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a first reading of ordinance 2018-16, placing, oh, we just did that one, sorry, 2018-17, amending Division Two, same lot, yard height and other site area regulations, section 110-428, side yard of corner lot, amending depth of side yard setback, first reading, Linda Partel, Portell, would you like to read the ordinance?
Yes. Ordinance number 2018-17, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Division Two, Lot, Yard, Height and Other Site Area Regulations, Section 110-428, same side yard of corner lot, amending depth of side yard setback, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an immediate effective date.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, we recently discussed this in the workshop setting. You recall that we have a lot of small lots, especially small corner lots, and our current code requires that we set back 20 feet in the front and 20 feet on whatever side has the street, which sometimes leaves us no lot left for development, especially when you apply the other side setback, you can end up with only 10 to 15 developable feet in the middle of the lot. It's pretty standard in urban settings where you have small lots to have a little bit extra side setback on the street instead of seven, maybe 10, and so I'm recommending that it works well in, in urban settings and still maintains kind of a, a line of development that, and gives you enough of an angle at the corner to be able to see for traffic. This would help because we have lots of things that have been developed in non-conformance to the code and that's a problem for them when they come in to make improvements or changes.
I thought we were going to take out the, the district thing.
That's true, where I apologize for that.
It's on the first page of the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
And it's in the bottom paragraph?
Yes, and make it the same across the board, yes, I apologize for that.
Right, so it's, so every district's the same?
Right, yes. So if you could, in any motion to approve, just specify that, it won't change the title at all, but specify that amendment, we'll get it in there, I apologize for that.
I think we talked about this last time at, at the workshop and it, it makes sense.
Yes.
Just does. I'll open the floor for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. Any discussion from the ward?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I think it's ready to be done.
I make a motion to approve on first reading of ordinance 2018-17, amending the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Division Two, Lot, Yard, Height and Other Site Area Regulations, Section 110-428, same side yard of corner lot, amending depth of side yard setback, with, with the change of taking district out of the equation.
Leading, yes. I second the motion.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 2018-18, amending article five. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2018-18, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Article Five, marine structures, Division Three, docks, Section 14-213, location of Boca Seega Bay and Johns Pass, east of Johns Pass Bridge, construction specifications, generally establishing standards for the height of new or replacement of seawalls, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an immediate effective date.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance we also talked about, the intent here is to provide for a maximum of development height for seawalls to avoid the problem of creating kind of a bowl along the coast and also the problem where one seawall might be considerably higher than the neighbors and create scouring during a. seawall might be considerably higher than the neighbors and create scouring during a drainage after or during a flood. It's also part of the changes that we're making in order to bring our regulations into closer compliance with FEMA specifications on flood management and stormwater management.
Floor is open for public comment. Floor is now closed. Any discussion from the board? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-18.
I'll second.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 2018-19, amending Chapter 94 floodplain management. City Clerk, would you like to read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2018-19, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94 floodplain management, updating definitions, clarifying the duties and powers of the floodplain administrator, clarifying permitting authority, amending requirements for the site plan criteria and additional analysis, specifying criteria, procedure and authority for appeals and variances, amending criteria for violation resolution, amending criteria for the use of fuel, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an immediate effective date.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, we've also discussed this in workshop setting. This is an amendment to our floodplain ordinance. It's, there are extensive changes in here. Most of them are actually administrative and deal with the responsibilities and authority for administering the code and for methods of providing data and the level of data that's required for change and dealing with variance procedures. That will primarily deal with the issues, there are some references to the amount and the nature of the fill that we allow. That's very important for FEMA to see that we are keeping up with and improving our administration of the floodplain. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I just had one director. It's on page, it's not on page, no. One, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth page where item number seven is highlighted. Signed and county filed non-conversion agreement as a condition of final certificate of occupancy. I think that's excellent. Was that added after or why is it highlighted?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That was added. I mentioned that in the workshop, but it was not in the material before.
In the initial, okay.
Right, and this is something that we only get credit for if it appears in the ordinance.
Yes, and we did talk about that as a commission either at a workshop, I believe it was at a workshop or, thank you, I thought that was the call.
There are substantial FEMA points that come with doing it in this way, and so we want to have it in place by tomorrow, at least on first reading. I think you've also had an opportunity to talk about this document before the non-conversion agreement because it had been brought to your attention, so the commission had talked about it and we'd explained it in detail before as well.
The floor is open for public comment. Floor is closed. Any more discussion?
No, but I would move that the VOC approved, proposed ordinance 2018-19 on the first reading and schedule for the second reading and adoption so that we, so that they know we're serious.
Second.
I'll second.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have an appointment to the Planning Commissioner, Commission. Director Portell?
Yes, so we had received one resume, an application in for the position when the item went out, and it's my understanding that we have also received a second application. One was, I don't know if the clerk would like to.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Madam Clerk, if you can turn your microphone on.
The second application is from J. Roger Pryor.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the item that's before you to seek appointment for a member to fill the vacancy of Ms. Ruth Cabela on the Planning and Zoning Board, one of the things that staff wants to bring into your attention is that the application that was received by Mr. Pryor, he currently serves on the city's Budget Committee, and one of the responsibilities of the Budget Committee obviously is to look at the city's operating budget, but also the capital budget. In the event that Mr. Pryor is considered for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Committee, staff believes that we need to have the city attorney do additional research to make sure that there is no conflict. From the standpoint is that as part of the budget, we need to bring the capital improvements plan to the Planning and Zoning Board for ratification, and if Mr. Pryor serves in that capacity, effectively he can be providing recommendations on a document that ultimately he would have to vote on in that capacity. So, that's something that we would need to get legal's perspective on, but something to consider as part of the appointment process. This may be something that the board wishes to postpone the appointment till we get a little bit more information and then can provide you a clear opinion on that matter, but we did want to make sure that you know that before you proceed forward with whatever appointment. If Mr. Pryor wishes to vacate the seat on the Budget Committee, then we can look to effectively re-post the position for someone to serve on the Budget Committee if he's more interested in serving in that planning committee. So, just some things for the board to consider as this information became available to staff later on in the afternoon today.
I think we should let him tell us which board he'd like to be on. Pardon? Let Roger tell us which board he wants to be on.
Roger, would you care to comment?
Do you have a preference?
My name's Roger Pryor.
Should catch up with you.
My name's Roger Pryor. 223-144th Avenue, Madeira Beach. I would suggest that rather than we make a decision, let's do the research, put this off if that's not hindering anything as far as the timing of it. I would think that'd be a better thing to do.
Well, I think what the issue is, is dual office holding and you're allowed to hold two committee positions as long as they're not final decision-making positions.
Yes, but has that determination been made? That they would conflict?
I need to ask a question of the staff. Give me a minute. Linda, does the Planning Commission make any final decisions on exceptions, special exceptions, anything else or is it just all recommendations?
They make a final decision on some site plans. Some developments.
That is a final decision board. The other board that he's on is which board?
The Budget Committee, Budget Review Committee.
And do they make any final decisions or only recommendations?
Only, only recommendations.
You could be on one final and one recommendation if you're allowed to do that. Made it easy.
Okay. Well, the floor is open for public comment now, I suppose, to individual.
How many open positions are there?
The floor is closed now.
I'm sorry?
One.
Just one?
That's.
So it looks like you have two candidates for one position, so they'll have to make a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay. Well, it does appear that we do have two really looks very qualified applicants. I would like to possibly ask Mr. Blazer if he would like to come to a meeting to introduce himself, kind of hold this off and make the decision next month. Can we do that or do we?
You could continue to a time.
I know that Linda's anxious to have someone on the commission, I'm certain, but.
You could continue to a time and date certain, so if you're going to continue to the next meeting, you should say what date and time and then you won't have to re-advertise.
Madam Mayor, the city, the Board of Commissioners is meeting again before the next Planning Commission since the way the second days of the month fall, you'll be meeting on the 8th for your regular meeting and the Planning Commission will not meet until the 14th. So, you could put off the decision until the next without affecting the operation of the Planning Commission.
And then have each of them give us a presentation?
Yes, you can do that.
I was hoping that Mr. Blazer would be here tonight so I could meet him, but I would think that that would be appropriate. Mr. Pryor has introduced himself and we know him from certainly the Budget Committee, but I think that to be quite equitable, we've got two and was Mr. Blazer noticed, was he?
Well, I think in the board packet, there was just his application, so he was unaware of Mr. Pryor's application.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. Well, may we ask him then to?
He was unaware, there was contested, I guess.
Okay, well, well, the other, well, whatever. But I'm just saying, can we, could you ask him to come and just?
Yes, ma'am, Andrea had called him.
At our meeting on this?
January 8th.
January the 8th.
Right, and we don't have to worry about date, time and certain because this is not a published public hearing for this particular item.
Just tell them January 8th, 6:00 PM, whatever comes up on that 6:00 PM meeting agenda.
And thank you, Mr. Pryor, for being here. Thank you.
Next, we have 2000, Resolution 2018-25, appointing the city manager to the Penneless County, Penny for Penneless Four.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, if I can have the City Clerk read the title of the resolution.
Resolution 2018-25, the resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, appointing city manager Jonathan Evans to serve as a staff appointee to the Penny for Penneless Four Joint Review Committee on behalf of the City of Madeira Beach and the entities represented by Seat 11 and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, on December 3rd, I had the opportunity to attend a Penny for Penneless meeting concerning the Joint Review Committee and Economic Development and Affordable Housing Committee that as part of the corresponding ordinance and the ballot language that was approved by the voters to proceed forward with another 10 years of Penny for Penneless, one of the changes that occurred as far as the Penny for Penneless from previous years, it allows for funds to be utilized for the acquisition of land to promote for affordable housing capital projects and then supporting economic development opportunities consistent with state statutes. One of the things that the Board of County Commissioners recommended as part of the adopting documents, that a group of 12 subject matter experts in the field of economic development, planning and housing be considered to serve on an advisory board to the Board of County Commissioners. The Penny for Penneless is projected to collect approximately $2 billion. $853 million is to be allocated to the municipalities and $915 million or 51.8% to go to Penneless County. The economic development and capital projects that will be looked at as well as the affordable housing elements is anticipated to be approximately 8.3% or $165 million of the proceeds from the Penny for Penneless. One of the things that is incorporated in the resolution as well as the adopted ordinances and the ballot language is that multiple jurisdictions will be afforded seats on this committee. The City of Madeira Beach is comprised of multiple agencies and we will be represented by Seat 11. In Seat 11, the communities that will be represented by the appointee is Bel Air Beach, Bel Air Shores, Indian Rocks Beach, Indian Shores, Madeira Beach, North Reddington Beach, Reddington Beach, Reddington Shores, St. Pete Beach and Treasure Island. The Board of County Commissioners would like for the appointees to be selected and confirmed no later than January 18th of 2019. By sheer happenstance and by me attending the meeting, my peers unanimously selected me to serve in the capacity as the representative for Seat 11 to represent the communities that I previously articulated. It would be for a two-year term and the seat would rotate every two years to the next entity alphabetically starting with the City of Madeira Beach. The Big C or the Barrier Island Government Council confirmed my appointment on Wednesday, December 5th, 2018 to allow for me to serve in that capacity, and at this time I am requesting support from the Board of Commissioners by the adoption of Resolution 2018-25 to allow for me to serve as the representative for our beach communities in Seat 11 and then attend the appropriate meetings to ensure that our interest is protected and that we work with our counterparts throughout Penneless County to bring economic development opportunities as well as look for affordable housing projects that can provide for much-needed housing stock in our county. At this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions that the Board of Commissioners may have.
Right, I just want to ask one question, okay, or just my quick comment and get your opinion on it. I was also at that VOC meeting and I thought I was very proud, you know, that your peers recommended you. But I, after I left it, I kept thinking, well, maybe you could just tell us a little bit more since, since in our city, the idea of affordable housing or economic, I guess economics, doesn't really fit in with our community. So maybe you can just elaborate just a little bit more on that, on how you hope to be able to, yeah, for our community.
One of the things, and it's pretty challenging in our community when we look at the affordable housing opportunities because the way in which the language in the statute and the language in the ordinance that adopted how affordable housing projects are to be managed, the property must be owned by the city in perpetuity and then you can enter into an arrangement with developers for the purposes of building these affordable housing units. Obviously, as a government entity, we have a limited stock of available properties for such. In addition to, we would have to get the voter's support to entertain such an investment endeavor. So I see the economic development, or not the economic development, but the affordable housing component associated with this probably more prevalent in other communities, not necessarily ours. I think the big opportunity for us is the economic development piece as we have and we are the home for Penneless County's number one tourist destination, and how can we utilize some of those funds to help improve the local economies? Because that is one of the language, or that's one of the language elements that was incorporated in the ordinance that the monies can be utilized to promote local economy and growth in local economies, job creation, wages, those types of things. So I think there's some opportunities to see some investments to improve the local economies, especially tourism being such a major element of what we do here in Penneless County. There would be a litany of opportunities. One of the great things about this committee will be in the process of rulemaking and setting the guidelines and being that advisory board to the Board of setting the guidelines, and being that advisory board to the Board of Commissioners as to how we think the policies and procedures are to be drafted, and then ultimately adopted, but then working together with peers throughout the county to ensure that the funds are appropriately spent, but that every community feels they're representative and have a seat at the table. So I think our biggest opportunity as a community is looking to tap into the economic development dollars, specifically when we're looking at tourism and our beach groynes, and things that we've had conversations about, maybe beach access, maybe there's some improvements that could happen at the village. You know, there's a litany of different things that I think, if we are able to tap into those resources, and my peers that are selected to serve see some of the challenges we have in our community, but also the other beach communities, and I'm going to make it a point to attend all the other communities' meetings, introduce myself, and then pledge that I will work with them, because what's good for Treasure Island is good for Madeira Beach, what's good for Madeira Beach is good for Reddington Beach, and we certainly need to work together. So I'm humbled about the opportunity to serve in the capacity, looking forward to working with our peers, and then bringing updates to this board, but as well as the other boards and the Big C on a regular reoccurring basis.
Thanks.
Any public comment? Floor's closed. Any more discussion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-25.
I'll second.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes, I want to thank the city manager for stepping up to the roll. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 28, 2018-26, approval of the city logo.
Madam Clerk, if you can read the title of the resolution to the record.
Resolution 2018-26, a resolution approving the logo of the City of Madeira Beach.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, staff embarked upon making modifications to the city's website, and as we went through the process to revamp the city's website, we thought it was appropriate to look at the city's logo. And if you look at the city's existing logo, it certainly shows that it was designed some time ago, and was in need of a fresh look to really showcase the elements in our community. The colors, in staff's perspective, were dated, and so we worked with our consultants, Media Garage, as well as network people, looking at some options to redesign a logo that really reflects our community, utilizing the color palette that we utilized in the website, and thought that it is only appropriate, that if we are to make this change and adopt new strategies and philosophies, how do we brand and market our community? It really starts with the logo and the design. Now, this is not the city seal. The city seal will remain in place in perpetuity, because that is an official seal of the city that the city clerk is responsible for, when it is, when she is in fact certifying documents. This would be utilized in publication, literature, stationery, business cards, et cetera. Now, it's important to note that, in the event that this is adopted, the signage doesn't change right away. As signage reaches the end of its useful life, we then provide for the new signage with the new logo, and so it's not something that we're going to come back to the board and say, we need $150,000 for new signage throughout the city. Incrementally, as we have to replace signs because they are aged or worn down, we will do that, utilizing the new city logo. Also, on the insignias and the things that employees wear, you will see them start wearing the city, the new city logo, with their department listed below. One of the things we want to make sure is that we are one team, we are one organization, and there's no need for multiple brands, or multiple logos, or multiple designs. So really creating that continuity, and so people see that the City of Madeira Beach touches every department, and we think that this logo provides for easier readability. It really pops as far as the colors and showing our water. The birds was a nice touch to it, to create a tropical element, and so staff is excited about the elements in this design, and would like to have the board's approval to move forward with adopting this as the city's official city logo, and then move forward to change the stationery and other elements associated with our marketing and branding approach. And staff stands prepared to answer any question the Board of Commissioners may have.
I have two. Are you going to trademark it, so it becomes ours?
That is one of the things that, that we've talked about, is to make sure we protect it and trademark it.
Right, and the other one is, the sooner we can get rid of the eggs, the better.
Yes.
The eggs are just horrible. I never have liked them.
Jonathan, on this right here, page here, it looks like you have a little bit of both right there, so is this the way it's going to be?
That is actually going to go away. That, the logo that you see on top of the city stationery or the memorandums was us, during the process, playing with different logos to see how it would look. So the final logo would be the logo that is attached in your packet. This was us attempting to just place out some different design elements to see, to subtly see if the board would notice the small incremental changes, until we decided to roll it out, so. But, but no, it will actually change to the, if adopted, it will change to the attachment that you have in place. So that was our first iteration, and then we've gotten to our final iteration, and that's why we're requesting that the board take official legislative action to adopt the attachment that's provided. And it has, here it has Madeira Beach, Florida on there, and I think it's important for folks to see that, hey, we are in the sunshine state, and that's why we wanted to make the sun very prominent, the water. Now it's back to our beautiful bluish-green and our birds flying, so that would be the official logo that you see as the attachment.
I like the birds, I like the addition of Florida. I don't like the sun, and I'd like to see more options.
I like that. That's the one I like.
I like the water, did I say that?
I like the sun. Have you seen the website at all?
Yeah.
Because they use that all over, and I just, I thought it was nice, addition.
I like the new colors, because I think they are fresh, I guess. Although I always did like that sun, before I saw that one, okay? And now I like it.
See, now it's got the new water, it's got the birds.
Oh, I just said, I like the birds, I like the water. Maybe what I don't like is the spikes on the sun.
Well, and one of the, one of the things that we wanted to emulate...
I know the rays, they look like spikes.
Well, and that's one of the things that the, the original logo with the jagged, the pointed sun, we realistically didn't see that as a, as a sun, per se. It just, it doesn't, when you look at it, and we even placed it on some stationery and looked at it, it doesn't pop as well, and it's not as soothing as the different strokes of the, of the new design. So we thought, working with the design consultants and everyone involved in that, we thought that this was, and we went through multiple iterations of this, we thought that this was the best out of the ones that were provided, but certainly, it is the, it is the board's pleasure.
John, you have a way, you...
Do you like this one?
I like that one.
But remember, he's colorblind.
I like this one.
He's colorblind. Pardon?
He likes this one.
I still would like some more choices.
Sorry about your luck.
That may be.
Okay, ready for a motion?
No.
I'd like, public comment?
You don't like the sun.
Public comment is closed. Now we can take a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-26.
The other picture is the existing...
Okay, come to the microphone for a public comment, thank you.
And then we got this one here. I like that.
Do you want copies to hold on to? I have some extra copies here.
Amy McCranee, North Reddington Beach.
Oh, please tell us.
I used to do a lot of your stitching. I don't really care for the new sun. Maybe if we merge it with something else, it just looks very blah compared to what you had.
Do you like this one? Can you see this one?
Yes, I can. I like that one, too.
This one's A, and that one's B. A and then B.
About C?
Where's C? Oh, C is on there.
I like the one Nancy has.
Okay, C is on there. End of package, okay. And you're saying, I'm a little confused, I want to make sure I got it too. Do you like the existing one?
Nope, I like the one on the letterhead. The one Nancy likes also, yep, that one.
Thank you.
I like this one.
Are you going to second her motion, then?
Oh, I didn't hear the motion, I'm sorry.
Which, the motion referenced which logo?
Attachment A.
A, okay.
And I second the motion for Resolution 2018-26, attachment A.
Any more discussion? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
I don't know.
Is he answering no questions, Jonathan?
It makes it tough being colorblind, though. I'll say yes, I don't know. I really don't, but I'll say yes. Oh, wait, the mayor just gave me a dirty look, I can't say no. Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
I like the letterhead one best, so, no.
Mayor Black?
No.
Three to two, motion carried.
Next, we have staff reports. Any staff reports from anyone? No? Reports and correspondence, any reports from the city commission?
Yes, I have some. I just want to let everybody know that I went to the Big C meeting on December 5th, when they did the presentation on the Beach Renewishment Project, which was kind of interesting. And I thought it was interesting when our city manager made his presentation to the board there. And then yesterday, Linda Portal and I attended the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Commission meeting yesterday morning, and there was a very good, very good presentation by TECO on natural gas, natural gas heating. What do they call it? Heat pumps, that's right. And that was kind of interesting, and I came back wanting to know if Madeira Beach has natural gas. I'm going to find that out.
Yes, we do.
Pardon?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
Because I have it at the BFW.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Basically, TECO runs it up to the building at no cost, so they're doing the same for your home, they run it up to your home for no cost.
It's a very interesting presentation. And then the third thing that I wanted to make comment on is for the public, for our television viewing audience, that tomorrow, tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m., December 12th, and Thursday night, December 13th, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall here in this room, there will be the Second Neighborhood Meeting for the Johns Pass Resort Project. It will be videoed, and will it be live streamed, do you know?
It will be recorded, but it will not be live streamed, but it will be recorded here.
Okay. And I would like to ask, in connection with that, city attorney, the Board of Commissioners never has received, Commissioner, Director Portal is, I don't know if she's still here or not, but we never received the video or the report of the First Neighborhood Meeting, and I thought that that was a requirement before they had the Second Neighborhood Meeting. Do you, can you advise on that, or?
I don't know. I would have to look that up in the code. I know that we had some changes that we were proposing for major developments, and I don't remember if those have passed yet already also. With regard to the neighborhood meeting tomorrow and the next day, Director Portal has instructed the planning commissioners not to attend the meeting, that they are supposed to base their decision on the information that's presented in the quasi-judicial hearing before the planning commission. The same for the city commission. Now, we can't prevent you from going to the meeting, however, if there's two or more of you going to the meeting, we have to advertise that one or more elected or appointed officials may be in attendance, so that there's not an inadvertent violation of sunshine law. So if you walk into the meeting and you see another commissioner there, please walk out, unless it's properly advertised, and that goes for planning commission members, as well as the board of commissioners who might actually hear this application further down the road. This is a meeting that the developer or the applicant is supposed to conduct with the neighborhood to collect information.
Right.
And if there's a video, that, you can watch that video, because that video can be put into the record at the quasi-judicial hearing, and everyone knows what is said by listening to the video. So if it's videotaped, that can be put into the record, and you could watch that even ahead of time if you wanted to, as long as you disclose that you watched that video.
Okay, that's fine, but you're saying that...
And anything to keep in mind, too, while we're discussing this, any planning or development issues that have come before you, those are typically, if they're for a site-specific application for an individual development, those are quasi-judicial. So you're really not supposed to have expert communications. If you do, write down when they occurred and who they were with, so that when we have the quasi-judicial hearing, you can say, I was in Winn-Dixie, and I was approached by Joe Smith on December 12th, who asked me about this development and traffic impacts was his concern. I instructed him, and I couldn't talk about it until the hearing, and please come to the hearing, or contact city staff for more information. For a quasi-judicial, you're sitting as judges, and you're supposed to decide what is presented to you during the hearing, and you're not supposed to base your decision on anything that's set outside of that hearing, so that everyone knows, and their court reporter, if it's going to be transcribed, the court reporter can write down, and all the exhibits are there, and everyone can see what the decision is made on, hear what the decision is made on, and cross-examine or rebut, present contrary evidence, so that everyone knows the whole basis of your rulings.
Okay, but, but because this board has never reviewed the video or that First Neighborhood Meeting is not a condition upon...
I know that we had a proposed ordinance, that they were supposed to have a video, but I don't know if that proposed ordinance passed yet, or if that's still in between first and second reading or workshops. I know that we were looking at that.
So I went to the first meeting.
Okay. You'll have to disclose that when it comes back up again.
Okay.
And then if, if two of you go, you need to make sure that we post the developer's notice even, with the statement that appears on all our agendas, that one or more elected or appointed officials may be in attendance at this meeting, and then post it downstairs on the glass door, so that it is a publicly noticed meeting, and it should be noticed at least 24 hours in advance. Even if you go to a Chamber of Commerce meeting, or if two of you are going to go to a Florida League of Cities meeting, and you're just going to discuss official city business there, that needs to be noticed, even if it's not an official city meeting. The City of Sarasota, there were two commissioners that went to a meeting about the homeless situation in downtown Sarasota, and they discussed, and heard questions back and forth, but they never talked directly to each other, yet they heard each other's questions. That went to Circuit Court, it was in court for over two and a half years, it cost, I think, over $100,000. Ultimately, the commissioners were cleared, but was a great time, expense, and stress to those commissioners. So you want to be very careful about attending meetings, even outside of the city, if you see another commissioner there. If you do go, don't discuss official city business. If something comes up at the meeting, like a chamber meeting, where they say, well, you know, this is happening at Johns Pass, and you know it might come before the commission, then you must politely get up and leave before that item's discussed.
So when I have ethics classes, and a bunch of us go, we just can't discuss city business?
Correct.
But we can all be there.
To learn about ethics, Chapter 112, and what the requirements are.
But the key is, if it's an item that is, potentially can come before you for some type of action, so, you know, in a situation whereby you're having, you're at a social setting, and the city is... and the city is receiving an award, you know, that's not something that you're going to effectively take any official action, or, you know, render any opinion on. So those are the situations whereby it's appropriate. But in situations where anything that could potentially come before you for official action, that is where the issues are. So definitely err on the side of caution and use discretion in those cases. And when in doubt, definitely call your neighborhood City Attorney or City Manager.
Any other reports from the Commission? Anything else from the City Attorney?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Just to say that we have been getting a good flow of letters to Santa, so for any young folks and families that happen to be watching this broadcast, first, I'm impressed that you are watching it, and secondly, we would encourage you to get those letters in, so we can get them to Santa Claus as quickly as possible, and provide the contact information, so we can make sure that Mr. Santa Claus and his elves give you a call before Christmas. So our mailbox is located here at 300 Municipal Drive, right here in front of City Hall, by the Christmas tree. So put those letters in the box, and we'll make sure those letters get to where they need to go.
Any reports from the City Clerk?
I do. Tomorrow, March 12th, beginning at noon, is the beginning of candidate qualifying period. And it will end at noon, January 11th, 2019. So everything has to be done and qualified before the clock strikes noon on the 11th.
And Madam Mayor, to the City Clerk's remarks, one of the things that her and I have discussed as for those individuals that become qualified candidates, that we would like to have an opportunity to hold a qualified candidate form or discussion to help educate those folks as to what the expectations are with regards to filling out the paperwork, what the clerk needs, so we don't find any situation where folks violate election law, or wait till the last minute, or assume that they can just walk into the clerk's office at 11:59 on the 12th of January, and get the information to become a qualified candidate. So just provide some education for those individuals, so we can make the process as smooth as possible. So we will be working on some dates as to when we can schedule that, that training, working with the City Attorney, so everybody knows what the expectations are moving forward.
They usually come in one, one week, and one another week, and they qualify them at different times. So you're saying to hold off on everybody's paperwork, and then bring them in for a workshop?
No, I think you provide them all the information, and then once they have all that information, they qualify. We can walk them through some of the other things that they may not know through the process.
Oh, okay, that's after they've been qualified?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:13.